Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for that as we approach Veterans Day. This is the November 4th Carver County Board of Commissioners meeting. And we'd like to open it up now to public comments. And I know Mr. Metz has something to say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and County Board Commissioners. So this is going to be a little difficult, but you know, I appreciate the opportunity to just recognize somebody that our office lost recently. On October 13th, 2025, Beth Young in our office died of ovarian cancer. And Beth was a senior administrative assistant for over 20 years in our office. And she was a real stalwart of our office. She was a steady force. And somebody that really lived her life with a lot of grace and humor and kindness and generosity. We had her celebration of life yesterday and our, our office is really hurting right now. And, and it's, uh, it's tough because she's 61 years old. And she was really special to us and, and she has two children, Josh and Molly. And we were really eloquent yesterday speaking about her life and stories, which was really great. And, and then her husband Dana was the city administrator for Deep Haven for over 20 years. And so she brought a lot of joy to our office too, and, and really represented the best of Carver County. She was so hardworking, so smart and so committed to public service. Continued to work when she was going through cancer treatment. And she was very family focused and really cared about people. So it didn't matter what role was or who she was dealing with in the office. She was really, really focused on doing her best. And, and I was fortunate because when I came here from McLeod County, she was assigned as my administrative assistant. And I didn't know her, but I got the best. So I was very fortunate and it made me much better as a prosecutor. And, and I trusted her so much that I would bring her in for mock trials when we had a murder case. Cause she's the, the everyday person. This is going to be our juror. So what do you think, Beth, about, you know, this case? What are the good parts about our case? What are the bad parts? And, and so really valued her and, and so we're, we're going to really miss her. And I appreciate the opportunity to recognize somebody, you know, that was, um, one of the very best of Carver County truly was. And, and so, uh, I wish she had another 20, 30 years of her life. But, uh, as they said, she said towards the end of her life, she said, you know, it's going to be okay. And, um, you know, live your life in the goodness that she was and the hard work and the humor. And that's what we take from our office and others is that we can carry on that legacy of just doing, you know, good work and caring about people and having that focus and, and having humor and the day-to-day things too. So thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. The agenda review and adoption. Can I get a motion?
So who, Mr. Chair?
Second. I have a motion by Lynch and a second by Fayhe to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. October 21st.
I think we had one more. You want to make some comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I moved off public comments. Come on up to the podium. I thought I already had this discussion with you.
Right, I thought so too. That's all right. Steve Curtis, 4430 Savannah Trail, Chaska. President of the Southwest Metro Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to say hey to you fine commissioners and all you guys over here on the left side. You don't get enough credit for what you do. They take it all. That's all right. Anyways, no, just wanted to tell you what we've been doing at the chamber and excited to hear what your priorities are. As we look at what ours will be as well for 2026, uh, for this next session. But invite you to our mayor's luncheon, November 18th, 11:30 to 1 at the Chaska Events Center. We have all four of our city mayors talk about 2025 and looking forward to 2026. So that's about it. We have a gala this week at Hackmore Brewing. So it's just been a, I don't know, it's been a pretty good year for the chamber. When I took over in October of 23, I think we were budgeted to be 40,000 short. And I think we might make a little couple bucks here and there this year. So it should be pretty good. 2026. So thanks for your time.
Steve, what was the date for the mayor luncheon?
November 18th.
18th. Thank you.
Always good to see you and keep fighting.
Mr. Chair, we'll add that to your calendar too. And let me, let me know if you don't have the invite, we'll get it to you.
And what was the credit we take? Do we, did we get credit for something? We took it? We do need to give these guys credit over here, uh, all the time. I think we do. So, all right.
Mr. Chair, to move approval of the minutes from October 21st with one modification. I voted, I was abstaining from the consent on that one. It was recorded as a nay. Um, other than that, I'd move approval.
Okay. I got a motion by Uterman and a second by Anderson.
Yeah, second. Yeah.
To approve the, uh, October 21st minutes as amended by Commissioner Uterman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Community announcements. Commissioner Fay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, thank you. Uh, wanted to give a shout out to the Zion Lutheran Church. Last night hosted their soup and pie supper and, uh, went there and participated. It was just incredible. Uh, the soup and pies were delicious and just a, a thank you to the Zion Lutheran Church. And then also we are asking the public to weigh in on Baylor Park on November 13th. Uh, Carver County Parks is hosting two open houses to gather community input on long-range plans for the Baylor Regional Park. Thursday, November 6th, it's at Lake Waconia Regional Park at the Paradise Commons. And then Thursday, November 13th, it's at Baylor Park, um, community room. And both times are from 6 to 7:30. So please come out and, um, provide your insight. We'll have the staff there and we'll have, uh, some family-friendly activities for all the kids. So please come out and participate at these open houses. And then also Commissioner Anderson and I, yesterday, we attended AMC District 10 meeting. And we went, uh, through various things, a lot of discussions. And we also started to talk about their legislative priorities. And they, um, have some under environmental, natural resources, general government, uh, public health and human services. And then also public safety and then transportation and infrastructure. And maybe Commissioner Anderson will be talking a little bit further about how those discussions went and those priorities. And a couple more things, Mr. Chair, wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the city of N Y A at an upcoming meeting. Uh, they're going to present their new plans for a wastewater treatment facility. Um, this project is critical to supporting the community's growth and long-term infrastructure needs. And they've invited Senator Brunnhagen and also Representative Bobby Harder to attend this meeting and also myself. And with Highway 212 expansion underway, uh, the city is preparing a significant development. SAC at Waconia has begun a major expansion that will add about 80 to 100 high-paying jobs in the next few years. And, excuse me, we've seen rapid interest in both the residential and industrial growth. And the new industrial park is now on the market and we have an option agreement to purchase an additional 80 acres to meet that demand. And then also they have an upcoming meeting. Uh, a developer is going to present plans for 77 new homes. Um, marking only the beginning of what's expected over the next decade. So a lot of activity happening in N Y A. And then also the city of Cologne, uh, recently approved, um, the village at Cologne, their 18th additional final platte and for another 15 single-family resident lots. So a lot of activity happening, uh, because of Highway 212. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
The villages?
The villages. Yep.
Like in Florida?
Okay. Hopefully it's not like in Florida.
Commissioner Uterman?
Mr. Chair, I've had the opportunity to attend that mayor's luncheon and it is pretty informative. Um, I, I like the ones that are more about strategic and future than projects. Um, but I think that before you joined, Steve, uh, the second most attended chamber luncheon was when Commissioner Fayhe and I did a, a state of the, of the county. And so I know that the planning of that is underway for hopefully early next, um, year. So we can share some of the great things we're doing here. Um, Mark, I appreciate your comments about Beth. Uh, I think that we talk about people are our strength. Um, and, and a moment like that, uh, is, is a moment that we actually elevate that, that is what we, we stand for. And I think you embody that more than anybody, Mark. So to Beth and our family, um, condolences, but, um, she's treasured and, and loved within the county. Uh, and you elevated that. So thank you. Um, I think that on the, a theme of, uh, community rallying together, we've, uh, at least Commissioner Workman, myself, maybe most members of this board have been inundated with messages and well wishes. And what can we do more of as it relates to SNAP? I'm looking in the back room to Heather as well. And I would tell you that there's been, um, hundreds of conversations, a lot of effort that doesn't always get seen in the headlines or on social media. Heather's crew has worked closely with a lot of the not-for-profits. We've addressed the challenges that lie before us. It looks like maybe the federal government's going to release some of those dollars. Just kind of a feel-good story. Um, I had the occasion to change my, um, uh, insurance at my house, homeowner's insurance. And I got a nice little note from the guy that, uh, is my, uh, agent. And he says, we, every time when we bring on a new customer, we make a donation to a local, uh, charity. And they made a donation on a local food shelf on my behalf. So I thought that was super cool and a nice little touch. But, um, SNAP is all about partnership and getting people fed that need to be fed and, and look at ways that we can do it better. Um, a call out together and grow to Love Inc., Humanity Alliance, Better Society and Bountiful Basket particularly. They've seen a lot of, uh, of community rally and make philanthropic or benevolent or just simple contributions, uh, to meet the need within our community. And I think that's what Carver County is all about. Um, in case you haven't seen it, pretty excited. Um, Sam and your crew, thank you. Uh, the new sign at Minnewashta, it looks great. And I know we've had a lot of other conversations about, um, you know, other parks that may be in the same need and, and maybe tap the brakes a little bit with the conversations we're having with Three Rivers. But if you go by there, the monument itself, uh, can be reused no matter what it is. And the sign can easily be replaced if we need to upgrade or, or change it. But man, it just makes it feel like a real park because that sign that we had before was, was not great. So thanks for the efforts. Um, I know that sometimes these things just magically appear and happen. Uh, but thanks for all the effort on that. Um, school volunteering, I know we all volunteer in different ways. I know in past meetings, uh, we've talked about people's, um, participations at pork chop dinners and breakfasts, rotaries and, and Lions Clubs, et cetera. I have a chance to volunteer at my kid's school. Um, it's a Spanish immersion program. It's one of the, uh, one of the schools that is growing by leaps and bounds. Commissioner Anderson was attached to that when she was on the school board as well. People are actually choosing Carver County because of the school and because of Spanish immersion. And so to be in that school with their book club, um, was, is, is fun to see the, the names and the faces and the people. And one of the conversations that came out of the book that we're reading was about bullying. And, uh, the question that was asked is, is it more important, uh, what's more detrimental to our community, kid bullying or adult bullying? And it was interesting to see the kids' conversations. They all align that adult bullying is probably the worst. And so to see that within our schools and whatnot. Um, Hazeltine, I had a chance to be up there last week. And if, if you haven't been up there or have the occasion to, we can get a tour scheduled. Uh, the general manager's been helpful in bringing Tom, myself and others together. And, and they have an ask of the state, um, to try and bring, uh, seven major events in the next 20 years to Carver County. Some may see it as just a, a rich white people's private club, um, but the economic impact that it could bring to our county, um, for the foreseeable future is significant. Also had a chance to spend time with Phil as Tom and I have done multiple times. Uh, he is probably one of the most strategic minds in this county. And so if you get a chance to tap into his genius, um, the state partnerships, the impact to tax. I don't know if everybody knew it, but it was the number one generator of, um, uh, of, um, merchandise within the PGA. And the people that come in there are largely not from here. And so he's even, uh, open to a special tax for that merchandise that could generate a lot of local dollars for state and local. And so we're staying tight with that and the conversations associated with it. We have a gentleman that lives, uh, within the county whose, uh, family business built the addition to that golf course. It's going to be nine extra holes, which is fantastic. They have five cabins built, a sixth and seventh around the docket, maybe an eighth as well. And so I want to underscore the fact that 29 will be a special year in Carver County when the Ryder Cup comes back to Chaska. The only city in the United States to host twice. Um, many of us on the board, I think maybe all of us on the board were at the 40, uh, 4110 opening. So kudos to Linden's team and those that organized it. Um, this was, I think, one of the first events that the ribbon cutting was coordinated by our internal staff. They did a fantastic job and I, my understanding is, is it saved us a few bucks in doing so. And so what a momentous occasion, four roundabouts and four, uh, in a mile. My kids and I had a chance to drive all four of them and they counted every one of them. And so, uh, it's kind of fun. I, I, I kind of forget that there was even a traffic light there and that was just six months ago. So thanks for your team for those efforts. And then I know today we're going to talk, uh, a bit about legislative priorities. Um, we've had a chance to meet with four of our five lawmakers. Um, I think that engaged and available have been two words that explain, uh, the lawmakers we've talked to so far. Uh, we've reached across the aisle and initiated conversations. I know Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Workman and others have been in favor of having a joint meeting with Scott County. But we pulled in some of their priorities to learn from. Commissioner Fay had mentioned some of the projects, the Norwood Young America, and I know Cologne's on the docket. Others have brought some things forward. Um, but, um, through scale and through Scott County, two of their priorities this year are sewer projects. If you add that to our seven and theirs that didn't make the list, um, we have double-digit sewer projects, um, that may, may take us partnering together to get some of these things done. And I know Commissioner Fay was on the mayor of Norwood for a good amount of time. Connor and Karen need a shout out as well for the efforts to bringing additional business, um, to capitalize on that 212 corridor as well. So, um, the last thing I have is it looks like Steve's off to a good start. I'd like to invite anybody that's able to join me as well. I always use this as an opportunity to do Movember. Movember is an annual event during November that involves growing mustaches or beards to raise awareness and funds for men's health issues, including prostate cancer, testicular cancer and male suicide prevention. I think that last piece was added because of the epidemic and the need for that. Um, and guys and girls alike can participate in different ways. So this is just something, you'll see this fur on my face until at least the end of November. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson.
All right. Thank you. Um, I had an opportunity to go to the newly opened F R C. They had a family fun night. And, um, so that was fun to, to be there and, and volunteer there and.
What is F R C again?
The Family Resource Center. So thank you for asking. And that's, that is, um, something that, um, was started by Carver County. And we are partnering with A Better Society and other nonprofits to really build, um, uh, family resources, um, in our communities. So that's just getting started. There's a ribbon cutting again on the 18th as well. Um, but I was happy to, to be there and, um, volunteer there. And I also had an opportunity to attend, uh, or to visit our local food shelf. Um, and it is really like Commissioner Uterman said, it's really heartwarming to see how many people are stepping up and, and stepping in and, and providing donations and volunteers. I think the biggest concern is they don't have a ton of capacity to serve others. Um, not because they don't have more food, but they don't have a lot of space. So, um, that's something, um, that we're working with. And, and I do have, uh, a meeting scheduled with, with both Bountiful Baskets and CAP to, to talk about, um, capacity and service to Carver County residents. And as, uh, Commissioner Fay said, I did attend the, the District 10, uh, meeting yesterday. A lot of counties are struggling with what we're, what we're struggling with, which is, um, the state government is, um, the word was stealing, uh, money from the state and, or from counties in some cases. But, but really those cost shifts that would force us to increase, um, property taxes is pretty much unprecedented. And so I'm glad, um, so we had good conversations about HHS projects, um, mental health, the, our opt-out, which I see that some transportation funding, which again, um, has, the legislature wants to, to take sales tax money and, and give it to, um, uh, the Met Council. So we had really, really good conversations. Um, I love those conversations because it makes me feel like we're not in this alone. We have good partnerships and I'm seeing more and more partnerships. And, um, with, um, some other counties are, uh, combining their efforts for, with their legislatures, uh, on that as well. And I think the more we can have priorities that are similar, I, I think the better off we're going to be in, in this. So, um, feeling, feeling good about that piece. And, and again, Mark, um, thank you for sharing those, those kind remarks about Beth. It is always hard to leave a coworker. Sometimes coworkers become our family. So, um, so my heart goes out to, to you, the entire, um, county attorney's office and her family. So thanks for sharing that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch.
Um, hats off to Christine Fenner from, uh, Waconia Chamber for, they're the 25 and 26 retail community of the year in Waconia. So hats off to Christine Fenner in the Waconia Chamber. Uh, I'd like to say it's, uh, opening of deer hunting this weekend. Be safe, but if you don't, you don't have to go to the woods because in the Waconia area, they have a D E A R. Divas enjoying awesome retail. So there's many specials around Waconia and, uh, sales and specials. It's a really a, a cool day to be out there. Um, driving across, uh, Carver County today, the harvest is almost done. And hats off to the farmers and drivers for keeping it safe. Uh, and then I'd like to shout out to the Watertown Mayor, uh, Girl Soccer Team. They play second in the state. They got to play at the US Bank Stadium twice, and then they ended up losing, uh, hard-fought two to one game to Providence Academy. So, which, uh, has some special athletes on that, that team.
They recruit.
Chad Greenway's daughter is the, she's the all-time state scoring record. She's, uh, for soccer. And she's, her best sport is basketball. It's, uh, quite an athlete to watch. It's, uh, pretty amazing.
Chad Greenway, wasn't he a South Dakota and who went to Iowa and came here? I don't know.
I know. That covers everybody, man.
Sounds shaky to a simple mind. Um, I'm borrowing, uh, Administrator Hemsey's glasses and I'm learning while his eyes aren't as bad as mine, I am seeing clearly. Because of his glasses. Uh, I, I have, uh, I have, I've had quite a hiatus from funerals. Uh, but I have three people. They do come in bunches, it seems. Jan Rome, just about everybody who's been around Carver County for a long time. Jan Rome, Rome Realty, um, passed away. Uh, in her sleep. Uh, known them since St. Hubert's and our kids in school and, and another St. Hubert's guy, Dan Murphy, not even a Carver County resident, Eden Prairie, but, uh, one of the best guys ever. And my neighbor. My next door neighbor, Lord Schren. That's all I have to say about that. All right. Politics. Snap. We have some events. Food events. Thank you, Heather. Wednesday, tomorrow, November 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 P M, A Better Society at 1453 Park Road. Sort of over by the Chan Assen Public Works building over there across the street. Uh, is having, is a pickup site for emergency food bags. Wednesday, November 5th, 5:00 to 8:00 P M. Bountiful Basket will host a Good Food Giveaway Drive-Thru Food Distribution Event. At 2100 Stouton Avenue, Chaska. I do believe that is our old pickle factory, correct? Uh, and that is on Thursday, November 6th, from 4:00, 4:00 P M to 5:00 P M. So one hour, Bountiful Basket Good Food Giveaway. Uh, that is on the 6th and we have it on the 5th. Does everybody have those? I hope everybody has those. Great opportunities, uh, for additional food resources. The public can go to That's all I have. Sorry I choked through my other announcements. But if that's all we have, let's go on to item number three, our regular session, 3.1, 2026 Legislative Priorities. We didn't do the consent? We didn't do the consent? So let's do the consent. I see Commissioner Lynch has moved and Commissioner Fay has seconded our consent agenda. Is there any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. I know Lynn is in the room. I'm sure we have the answers. 2 dot 5 is talking about the, um, plan that impacts Highway 10 up to 43. Um, will the folks that are proposing Athletes Village be part of that, those discussions as that unfolds? I got that sports complex being proposed. Yep. Okay, good. The guy that's leading the charge asked me this weekend and so I said I'd get an answer. Thank you. Next one was, is about Minnewestha Park. I think there's final payments for, on 2.6, for the regional park improvements. Did we see delays on that park and do they get penalized if there is delays on those? Was there delays in building the park in Minnewestha? And if so, do they get penalized for the delay?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, good morning. One more time, Commissioner Oderman.
When they built the park?
Yep.
My understanding is they were behind schedule and there was delays. And then there's some change orders. Does the delays, do they get penalized for that and can that offset some of the change orders?
There could be penalties and Marty's still leading that. I know we're working on basically punchless items, some small items. But the change orders will be reflected in, if there is penalties, that'll be reflected in there. Yep.
I just ask because our budget is tight. And so, I want to impress upon the taxpayers and the staff that's looking at this. It seems like we see an overabundance of change orders, but we don't necessarily see the offsetting. They were supposed to deliver on a timeline and they didn't. And so, we didn't have the useful life of them for the couple of months that we thought we would. And so, maybe there's an opportunity to use that to offset some of the, so we not have to penalize our taxpayers.
I will make note of that and speak, you know, Marty's continuing to lead that. I will say, Commissioner Oderman, that project is running under budget. So, we do have an intended surplus that would be rolled over to other priorities.
Sounds good. And then 2.7, which is the consulting group for 212 Project Payment Settlement. Why would we be on the hook for somebody else's air? I think it ran into three million from state and a chunk from us. I just wanted to understand that more because my understanding was the core drilling was off and that wasn't necessarily our fault, it was theirs. So, I was curious about that one.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, when it comes to the soils, there's lots of considerations that go into that. Bottom line is Mindot only has three million to pay for the fix. That's the maximum out there willing to put into it. Obviously, it's a shared project. You know, the county was the lead. So, when you lead a project for the state, you basically take, the county takes the road from the state. And then when it's all done, they take it back.
Yep.
You know, we had several options to fix that, including letting it sit for a while and do an overlay every five, set 10 years. And you could calculate the math. It'd take a long time to pay, to spend three million, but Mindot wouldn't accept that approach. So, we were doing a full excavation.
I guess my question, Lynn, is why wouldn't the contractor be on the hook for all or some of it?
The contractor was directed to do the work.
Okay.
And they follow what the inspectors tell them. And they were not told to stop the muck excavation.
Okay.
They weren't, they were told not to continue with it.
And who are they?
Because it would require more land in order to do the full. They were directed by the state not to do the work.
Okay.
And here we are.
So, I just want to impress upon my peers that this is another example where we took on a state project. They messed up and then we have to pay for the mess up. It's another kind of unfunded state mandate. I appreciate everything you're doing. It's the right thing for the people that are traveling that road, but we're on the hook for partial dollars associated with their mess up. So, thank you.
Yeah, the original plan, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, was the state wanted us to pay for all of it.
Yep.
Full three million.
Yes.
So, we negotiated for about a year.
Thank you. Thank you.
To get them to step up. So, we do have a little skin in the game.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes and we are going to move on to our 2026 Legislative Priorities. Mr. Hemsey, you need your glasses?
No, sir. I'll swim through this one. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, board members. As was mentioned a few times already this morning, there's a lot going on, not only at the state, but the federal level. So, certainly every time we update our priorities, it's important. It seems like it's more important than it ever has been. And of course, we're working with multiple groups. AMC was mentioned this morning, Mike, others. I'm trying to partner as best as we can with other, especially metro counties. I mean, with my metro group tomorrow, we'll talk about just that. So, a lot of partnerships, a lot going on, a lot at stake. And of course, what we're talking about this morning is our priorities. They're trying to boil it down to, you know, a handful, a dozen or so. That's been our strategy, which has been very effective if you think back, even 212, for example. That was part of a strategy a long time ago and look at it now. So, we've already talked about this in a work session. Thank you, Commissioner Workman, Commissioner Oderman, for serving on the legislative committee to guide us through this. There's no real magic behind this and, you know, sometimes should we put something on or not? Is debatable and that's up to you as a board. So, I don't want to repeat again what's already gone through multiple times, you know, in addition to last week's work session. The 11 that were on the list were the items that we focused on during this session last week. And the real focus, I think, is on some of the top ones, these unfunded state mandates, federal mandates resulting in now a proposed, this 2% state and federal tax shift surcharge in our budget. Very obviously identifiable. Commissioner Anderson used the word unprecedented. I agree. So, it really jumps out at you and there's a lot of same, similar between all these issues or most of them anyway, with that sort of theme. So, again, I'm not going to focus on the details unless, again, unless you have questions, point those out. So, I will jump ahead here and again, if you have questions on these, let me know. I just saw a snap in here. Of course, we talked about that this morning. All these items are critical, front page headline type issues that we're focusing in on. I did want to point out, my fault, I missed this one. I had it ready and then I didn't get it in the packet last week. And before that, actually, you adopted a resolution on the Southwest Transit opt-out issue. We did put together the language. I distributed that via email yesterday. And here's a summary of that. Again, this was already mentioned, but really, I don't know if attack is too strong of a word, but a bit of an attack on our opt-out, very efficient, very effective system by the Met Council and the state of Minnesota to really take that over, which this is a position in opposition of that. We're asking that the legislature preserves that transit model. Oppose any proposal that would eliminate agencies such as Southwest Transit. I think there's three or four. So, you got Minnesota Valley, Southwest, Plymouth and Maple Grove, I believe.
Yep.
Would eliminate any of those. I think all of those are run very effectively. And then at stake is a distribution of significant money. So, supporting that fair and equitable distribution of money and avoiding that, that was a very bad idea, I believe, to take over our trans, our opt-out transit. So, I'd propose we add that to the list, so that'd make 12. Commissioner Oderman also last week had requested a position in housing. As we tried to clarify with him, between then and now, this is the language that Commissioner Oderman presented to you. So, that would be an option for the board to add that to the list, too. That would make 13. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd take questions.
Commissioner Anderson.
I do have some questions. Can we, can you talk a little bit about the process for coming up with these priorities?
Well, of course, you have a legislative committee that has two commissioner appointments, appointed in January. This year, we have Commissioners Workman and Oderman. Also critical and I should have thanked the division directors in particular for submission of ideas, concepts, proposals, recommendations. Try and sort through those as best as we can, focusing on what we feel, you know, sort of the cream that rises to the top. So, the multiple discussions with that group also. But those are then packaged up. I should also thank Ari and our communications department for assisting. There's a lot of work behind that. Packaged up for the legislative committee. Tony Albright, our lobbyist, attends those meetings on a regular basis. He helps sort of guide through and sometimes talks us out of going certain directions. Sometimes he's very helpful, obviously, in focusing in on what may be strategically the smart moves here, right? Sometimes you don't want to put things on this list. Sometimes you want to just put things that are not really a request, but defense, right? Which that transportation issue with the improvement account, that's a good example. You want to put something on that says, wait a minute, that's defense, right? Don't do that, please. So, that's the process, Matt, I'm sure. Now, I would say, you know, the legislative committee, it's not a, like most of our committees of that nature, it's not a voting committee. We try and reach consensus. I always look to the two board members on the committee to try and figure out what is their consensus. And I thought there was. But having said that, we kicked around a lot of different issues. And Matt had, Commissioner Oderman had a whole laundry list that didn't make this particular list that the division directors then helped saying, well, yeah, it's an important topic, but for whatever reason, we wouldn't recommend putting it on this particular list.
Well, and about that, so the two items that have been identified to be included. What was the conversation? I know I've heard a lot of conversations about the opt-out. We talked about that at length yesterday at AMC. We passed a resolution. I mean, obviously, it seems like there's board support around that. What was the conversation around housing within the committee?
I'd leave that more to Commissioner Oderman.
Sure. So, we batted around a lot of ideas and if you look at this, almost exclusively, everything that's on our list is defensive. It's a priority, it's a policy year. There may or may not be funding. It could be a bridged year at the government. To your point earlier, my point earlier, alliance building, intentional alliance building to try and get some of these defensive things done has bled over into some proactive things as well. We know as it relates to housing that we have a missing middle, that we're probably more deficient here than in most places. We know that affordability within Carver County is the reason why a lot of people don't come here. We know that our 65-plus population is growing faster here than almost anywhere to the detriment of our less than 18. And we know that that less than 18 is what's going to fill our workforce, our schools, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, in those alliance building meetings where, which should culminate to our million dollar meeting with Scott County, Mayor Briggs in Prior Lake has been at the table defensively and offensively on the housing issue. Multiple other communities are well aware that Scott County has legislative priorities. And then if they plus it up, they have something called SCALE, which we don't have in Carver County, but it's a formal alliance between school districts, cities and county. I think law enforcement is well informed in that as well. And from SCALE, they had housing as part of that priority from their, from their, Scott County, they've had housing as the priority. So, as we consensus build, most of this language came from stuff that they've had for a couple of years. And it also reflects that it was on our priorities list, I think, for the first time ever last year. And so, for those reasons, strategically, alliance building, proactive, and then also knowing that at the state bipartisan support. Tony actually advised us yesterday that there, it will be a topic at the Capitol this year. It does have bipartisan support. So, we can either write ourselves into the story as part of a priority or we don't have to. And so, I'm typically an action guy. Let's write ourselves into the story, be at the table and be proactive in the solutions versus be the lag status quo person.
So, the question that I have is, was this discussed at the, in the committee?
Yes.
So, it was. And so, but it wasn't brought as a recommendation because it was brought last week as a recommendation. So, I guess, you know, I've been in government a long time. I believe it's not what you do and how you do. From a process standpoint, my expectation is that once something goes into committee, the recommendation that comes out of committee and that, to get feedback. So, I am a little surprised that a committee member would then bring it out for us to discuss.
Commissioner Anderson, so you won't be supporting the Southwest Transit late edition?
No, I will be because we already, because-
But why don't we go through the chair at this point of the meeting?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
And also, so, so thank you. I mean, I guess that's my expectation. The Southwest Transit and the opt-out is something that, again, we as a board did a resolution on that last week and it's something that we have discussed. I, but since this was brought up, I did reach out to our community partners. I did reach out to, and while there were some concerns about this specific language, the feedback that I got, and actually I go back to and is, I don't see housing as part of our strategic objectives. And we went through that process earlier this year because we really need to focus as government. We have a lot of things that are on our plate. Housing and economic development are things that are full-blown, the responsibility of our cities. And, and I, and cities, from the feedback that I got, are putting this on their legislative priorities. And there's plenty of entities that are supporting that. So, for me, I think we should stay focused on what is our priorities as a county. And I agree, we are playing defense this year. And it's never fun just playing defense. But that's where we're at right now. And we're at a place where we're in defensive mode. And I believe that less is more when it comes to priorities. I'm not thrilled that we added a 12th, but it makes sense. That's something that we have. We also have a wide array of areas that we're responsible for. So, I guess I will support the opt-out, adding that as a 12th. I will not support housing because it's not part of our strategic priorities and it's not our role.
Okay. Well, I guess I can kind of look at the language. For me, the language is very not specific. It's a narrative, I know. And I've heard for 40 years, the school teachers and sheriff's deputies and the firefighters, social work, on food industry workers can't afford housing. And that, of course, isn't a Carver County Board-caused issue. But I think the legislative committee can maybe do a better job of honing in on what it is we could possibly do. There is a new tax that was passed in '23, I believe, that, is that the three quarters or 50? 50 cent. And so, a lot of money is going in. I just feel as though the housing issue, I know I sent Commissioners a, an article from the Wall Street Journal about how 30-year mortgages have caused housing prices to rise. And there's probably a thousand things from Canadian timber to oil to land costs to everything else. So, I'm trying to figure out and I'm still willing and able to work on some language that would directly, the last sentence, I'm not sure, Commissioner Oderman. "We support modifications to current state condominium law to help encourage the construction of new condominiums and small square foot dwellings." Only in that it's attached to the top of the paragraph, which is, I think, sort of nudging the cities to change planning and zoning laws. And I know that was a very controversial issue in the legislature. I know at least one local legislator supported it. So, I, housing is definitely an issue. What my role in that is, I think this board is open to understanding that better. But I don't think as a legislative priority, this quite hits it yet. So, if we could hone it down, is that the right word? Hone it, sharpen it to specifically either play defense with the legislature, what they're planning. I think at least orally, this board and others and certainly our cities, we're against the concept of having the state decide zoning in Chaska and Chan Hassen and beyond. So, so we played defense, but I'm not sure I'm seeing what the legislative offense is.
And Commissioner Workman, as I talked to some of our city partners, I guess, if we were to move into this area, which I'm not sure this is the year to do that, I would recommend that we take the, let them take the lead and use their language. I know some of this language was bothersome for them, but they, but, so I- I know some of this language was bothersome for them, but they, but, so, I, and the missing middle piece makes them nervous. So, again, this is their role, and I too am open. I just think we need to partner with our cities on this, and let them take the lead and see how we can support them.
Commissioner Urdeman?
I just think we have to be careful that we're really selective when we want to punt and take status quo and not get involved. And when we do, Highway 5, 41, 212, a significant amount of energy and resource was meant to do that, to open up economic development. Corridors to commerce was used, economic development. And so, the cities benefited from us taking the role, even though it wasn't our job to do so. We came outside our swim lane, because it made sense to do so. We came out our swim lane when we're doing water and soil stuff within the city of Chaska. And so, we bring the people here with the road. And then we have cities that'll build 3,500 houses underneath $700,000 that will create a vacuum of tax need. And those cities will be able to unilaterally decide whatever they want to do, and Heather's team will have to provide services, and Linden's team will have to provide the roads, and our water and sewer will have to provide the services, and our law enforcement, albeit the cities pay a portion of it, will have to provide base-level services. And so, we're real selective when it takes to get to step into something that is a little bit more challenging. But we're not all that selective when we say, it's the city's responsibility to do those things. We're sitting on 16 and 1/2 miles of gold on 212 on the promise of economic activity, that of which 90% of it sits within the jurisdiction of the county. And we can solve this problem by simply zoning for it and allowing additional developments, both industrial, commercial, and residential. I want to stand on the side of the goal that I had when I ran, and the goal that I have when I'm in office. I want my kids and my grandkids and your kids and your grandkids to be able to call this place home. A great place to live, work, and play for a lifetime is our charter. And maybe we need to abandon that or put asterisks on there, so long as you make $250,000 a year. But as it is such, my kids and your kids, unless you're making $250,000 plus a year, cannot afford to live in this community, and I'm trying to do something about it. I had no idea that I would get so much resistance from my peers, so much resistance from cities. So, either solve the problem, or say you're not going to, you can't do both. And so, I stand on the side of, let's put this on the priorities, let's align with what our lobbyists said others are doing. Let's have partnership and strength in the Southwest Metro, where our peers in Scott County, our peers in cities within Scott County are signing up for language similar to this. And we know this won't be final language, we know this won't be final language at the Capitol, but we know that our friends on the Democratic side and the Republican side are toiling with this, and I hope that they would see that Carver County wants to be part of the solution, not just kick the can and say it's the city's issue. And so, I fully support this. If you don't, that's your choice. But this is one that I never anticipated being on a hill with, but as I see time and time and time again, housing is part of the overall ecosystem, and we can't claim to be the best place to live, work, and play for a lifetime if we don't step into conversations like this actively. So, that's all I'll say. It doesn't seem as though it has support from my peers, and I accept that.
Commissioner Anderson? Well, let me interject. If I'm a legislator, and I guess I'm a former one, if I looked at this, I am uncertain, if I had a piece of housing legislation, what this would support. It's broad, it talks about a problem, but it doesn't show me the solution to the problem. So, other than that last sentence, which I do not quite understand, and/or the means to getting to that last one, I don't know if I was a legislator, if I would understand. So, I'm going to repeat my point. I think we all know, I don't think housing is part of the ecosystem, it is the ecosystem, and from which everything comes from. And so, we definitely have a problem, but I just don't see this paragraph or these, this paragraph helping get there, other than we would, by voting for it, we'd say, we admit there's a housing problem, and I just did, probably several times. So, I know that the Met Council is, and has been for decades, trying to undo our wonderful opt-out system. So, playing defense on that is really easy. Don't do it. But I, is, like I said, I sent the board an article on 30-year mortgages and how that's inflated the price of housing. Believe that article or not, I'm not asking for, I'm not telling anybody I even understand, but I think this resolution is attempting to get at, get at the business of telling the cities what to do.
Commissioner Workman, Chair FMA, let me volunteer this language. Carver County supports state legislative assistance, which provides additional funding and supports the coordinated efforts of achieving a sustained and increased availability of options across the housing lifecycle. The prevailing objective for any housing initiative must provide local control to increase production of residential units, the preservation of existing homes, and housing stability programs for individuals and families.
Mr. Chair, where is that verbiage coming from?
Last year's approved by everybody on this board, with the exception of Commissioner Anderson's language as number three on our legislative priorities.
Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson. Chair Workman, if I may. Two things. One is, again, I think this conversation was had in the Legislative Priority Committee, and I think what I would expect in it is that information like this, batting around wording like this should have happened in committee. And so, that's number one. I think we really need to look at our process, and we really need to do things. So, bringing this up kind of at the 11th hour is a bit frustrating to me. B, Carver County does support this, our cities are all on board with this, and that is where it belongs. If we wanted to get into this in a way, again, we need to let the cities take the lead. I'm not interested in doing anything around housing that our cities aren't supporting. I understand that it's a problem, and I understand that we have a lot of skin in the game, and yet, it's the role of the cities. And so, if this is something that we want to do, then we really need to meet with our city partners and come up with language that we all agree with. And at this point, on the cusp of the next legislative session, this feels like too little, too late, from a process standpoint.
Commissioner Urdeman?
Mr. Chair, I think the notion that this is in the dark of the night and behind closed doors needs to be rechecked, and it's not at the 11 o'clock hour. Again, if I point to last year's legislative priorities that had unanimous support of the board, albeit before you joined the board, we could simply adopt the language that we had in 2025. It's been out there, it's been public, it serves our needs. It may not go far enough, as anybody wants it to go, but it's a step in the right direction. It allows us to coalition-building, to your point and your opening comments, we need to build more partners. Our partners are chomping at the bit to partner with Carver County and Scott County and the neighboring cities. And if we think that the cities are going to solve a problem that they have chosen not to solve for 50 years, I know it's a hard one, because we're just going to punt to them, I don't, I am not resigned to that notion. We've known that we've needed a $300,000 to $400,000 product for years, and it hasn't been built. We've done the bookends, we've got the market rate stuff, we've got plenty of $700-plus thousand dollar houses in our community. It seems like we have a good amount of the subsidy, highly subsidized projects, like the three in the city of Carver, which serve their purpose. But I think it's frankly cruel to put somebody in a subsidized house and not have them have the next step up. Are they going to stay there and languish forever? Are we going to wait for the city to address something they haven't for 50 years? I just can't, I can't accept that premise. And so, I think the best compromise, hearing all of this, is just re-adopt the same language that we had in 2025, that we all approved. It seems reasonable.
Commissioner Urdeman, I think you're getting at my point. So, and I don't hold out a lot of hope for this today, but as I said, I think the board's open-minded to looking at solutions in the future, but your $300,000 house, that would be a start. So, what can Carver County, this Carver County Board do to make a local city or ourselves develop, fund, other, to get a $300,000 house? That's what would work in language for housing. Because if you talk to a Pecorni or a Ripke who've developed things, it's the land. So, what are you doing? You know, going down 212, you're talking about farmers getting rich, because their land is going to be worth so much money. Well, that's counterproductive to 250 to $300,000 houses. So, you know, and I'm thinking about development, I don't know if all of you are on Highway 5 in Chan-Hassan, right by Paisley Park. Just now, two very large buildings have gone up. That is all one company, the Bernard Group. Congratulations, it looks beautiful. But look how far in eastern Carver County, a piece of Highway 5 hasn't been developed, and now has, along with XL Energy next door, that even looks nice. So, but I think the county board is getting a little afield with all of that, but for us to know exactly what it is, we would ask the legislature to do, force the cities to do, to build that $300,000 house, is, I think, what we would be looking for. That would be, I think, I think the board agrees, there's a missing middle. So, how are we going to get to it? And platitudes and, like I said, for 40 years, I've heard about the sheriff's deputies that can't afford anything. They got to marry a nurse so they can afford it. That's always the thing. So, we get it, we've all been through it. We were all young once, and so, but I'm really looking for more details. And again, the last sentence, I don't know what even the last sentence does, but build more apartments. It seems like that's where we want our young people. We want them all in boxed apartments near a light rail line, and I don't agree with that. So, that isn't my suburban dream, but anyway. So, should we move to a motion on this, Commissioner Urdeman? I see you had language to amend it, you could amend that motion. Should we lay it on the table? Work on it? Does it have a hockey goalie mask on? Should we kill it while we have the chance? What do we, what do we want to do? Commissioner Anderson?
Final comment. One is, we're not punting to the cities, it's their role. So, we do need to talk about, do we have a role in housing or not, period? The other thing is, the world has changed since we did our last legislative priorities, and I attended that legislative priority breakfast in December, because I was elected but not sworn in. And the world has changed, and the state is looking to use county money and property taxes to solve their budgetary issues. So, that's our number-one priority this year, is to fight for our tax holders, to fight for our taxpayers, to keep the state at bay. And our, the current 12 priorities do that. They send a clear message and a clear strategy by which most of our other counties and partners are in line with. So, I move that we adopt the 12 legislative priorities that include the opt-out.
Second. Okay, I got a motion by Anderson and a second by Fahy to approve the 12 legislative priorities, which includes the opt-out, or is there 13?
That would be 12.
12.
Including the opt-out.
Sands the Urdeman housing language. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chair, I've never been a top-down type of guy. I don't think we like it when the state plays top-down with us and transfers unfunded mandates to us. I think the best form of government is the one closest to the people. Cities have all their, they have elected mayors, boards, planning commissions, and cities can decide how they would expand. I do fully support Southwest Transit and the opt-out. We have to remember, we have to stay in our lane. We have planning authority in the rural areas with the townships. Cities have planning and zoning authority within the cities. Like the last sentence you mentioned, the construction of, we encourage construction of new condominiums and small foot dwellings. Does that mean that your neighbor can build a small-foot dwelling in their backyard and then rent it out? That's a discussion we don't want to have here, and they can have it at the city. Again, the best form of government is the one closest to the people, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, and also, just with the second of the motion, going back to Commissioner Anderson's comment about the process, and we had a work session about this just a week ago, 10 days ago, and there was nothing brought up in the work session. And with Commissioner Urdeman being on the Legislative Committee to have all year last year to be able to formulate a housing policy or priority, as we talked about in the work session, we know full aware that there's going to be other issues that are going to arise in the legislative session next year that aren't our priority. But we're going to react to those, and that's why you have a lobbyist, and that's why we have two individuals serving on that committee, because the ball is always moving forward.
Okay. I got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on the Anderson motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. If I could follow up just then on the next steps. On the screen, December 16th, tentatively, the legislative breakfast. Krista, have we received, did we send out an invite in there yet? Okay. So, we're in the process of getting RSVPs, we want to get as many legislators in the room, of course, as we can. That'd be, we would hold that 7:30 a.m. at the American Legion. We'll send out formal confirmation with that, and then we'll finalize the packet with the priorities and get that in their hands, too. We do have one more meeting with our individual legislators, Representative Ream, this afternoon, so that's wrapping that up, too. So, on our way then to the legislative session on February 17th, and a lot of work to be done in the meantime. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Move to adjourn. Was that your county administrative report? Mr. Henzie?
No meeting next week, I'll add that.
Will people be deer hunting?
There's no meeting next week. And it's Veterans Day, too, so honor the veterans on Tuesday.
Okay, now I'll take a motion to adjourn. Who said that?
Commissioner Urdeman.
Commissioner Urdeman? And Commissioner Lynch is seconding it proudly. Any further discussion? Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes.